How are you?
Good.
Good.
No, they don't.
We caught, we caught this one.
They know everything about you, right?
I guess we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out.
I know.
Yeah, it would be good.
Do you all get these emails, too?
It didn't look like an exciting email.
I should have get rid of them.
I didn't see anything exciting.
I'm happy.
I figured out the thing.
Oh, yeah, the deeds. Film festival.
Film festival.
I don't know.
I tried to.
Maybe that's it. I think this is from the Cherokee Chamber.
Oh, is that what this is about?
I don't know.
It seems that we had a deadline.
Clock on the wall.
That is a problem.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. This is the City of Canton Council Meeting, May sixteenth, twenty nineteen. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Goodman?
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. For all that are here tonight, we ask that you be with them and their families. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make important decisions about our city and its welfare. And we ask that you be with our public servants as they go about doing their duty each day. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And first item is the consideration to approve the agenda. Is there any changes or additions to be made? Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. We need to add one item under Old Business to, for the discussion and possible action to engage Smith Welch to represent the City of Canton service delivery process.
Okay, that would be, that would be item G under Old Business?
That's correct.
Okay. Any, any other cha- yes, sir.
I was going to request, I had actually requested that we add to Old Business discussion and possible gen- action regarding the Jones Building. I think based on our policy, my intent was to continue the conversation.
I understand.
And so I think it'd be probably more appropriate to put it on the agenda for our June work session.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection to that? Okay. All right, so we will, see, that is item F, okay? So we'll remove item F and then it, the one that Billy added, the SDS discussion will be item F. Everybody clear with that? Any other changes, corrections?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
Second?
Mr. Grant made the motion to approve. Mr. Young seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? All members voting for the motion? Okay. Mr. Pepper, City Employee Recognitions.
Over the past two months, a number of our employees participated in a succeeding-as-a-supervisor training class through the Carl Vincent Institute of Government. And that class deals with the jobs of a supervisor, communication, leading a team, building trust, planning, delegating, motivating, evaluating, building in discipline, and then wrapped everything into a course project. And they were provided certificates for the class that day, and I didn't think that was a good enough job. So I got with Ms. Waters, and we ordered some frames for their certificates. And I asked them to be here tonight so that we could recognize them. I did threaten a couple of the ones that don't like to speak that they might have to give a speech in front of the class, but I've given them a pardon on that tonight. So I'm going to call them up one at a time, and they can just line up here, and we'll hand out their certificates to them. Brittany Anderson.
Brittany is our City Mayor. Donna Bell. Ms. Linda Buchanan. Adam Dodson. Ms. Teresa Fitz. And Mr. Port Clark. Melissa Forrest. Mr. Eric Fortner. Assistant Building Official. Kyle Harahut. Scott Hooper. He's our Public Works Director. Merrick McCruer. Coach and Flyer. Mike Morgan, our IT Director. Beau Morris. Cody Phil. Not the pool, Brandon, Brandon Poole. Operation General Public Works. Was that such a police department? Jason Taylor. He is a certified, you need to develop, you know, the permits and licensing. Felicia Wright. You know, the ordinance. Matthew Watson. And then Officer Yurkowski. I want to congratulate each one of them on their time. I think they've spent five days in class working on, working on these certificates and they've worked hard on this time. So we actually got to host that training in this room, one of the ladies from the Robles facility, it was our little community meeting, and so this is a real opportunity to give you some time and question. Thank you very much for your time, and you're a great man.
Thank you all very much. Yeah, congratulations. Okay, our April UCR report, Chief Mitchell?
Thank you, sir, City Mayor. Thank you for the certificates. I'll make sure the officers, they get those, and we'll get a picture out as well. This is, as you said, Mayor. Mayor and Council, thank you for letting me address you as far as the April crime report. If you've been able to view, as you say, our calls for service were one thousand nine hundred and twenty. As listed as our strategic plan in looking at our areas of concern. Some inning autos in the month of April, and theft by taking were our highest areas of concern. You see locations there, Walden Crossing, Northside Cherokee. Our detectives are still working on those cases. Yeah, points to cities south of us down in one forty quarter that have had the same issues. So we're working with other, our other cities to see if we can get some additional intel on our crime analysis to see who these, who these individuals are that are perpetrating these crimes. And then you see that we had theft by takings. Happened to report as far as accidents, we were, we are down from last month. I think last month was one hundred and twenty, twenty-four, this month was one oh seven. And then we had several selective, selective traffic enforcement plans or operations this month as relates to speeding and distracted driving. So those were successful during the month of April. Our upcoming community events, tomorrow's Read with the Cops, our last one with the school system, and then we'll start back, start back again next fall. But we got Coffee with the Cop, we're going to announce that on our Facebook page. Got a pretty good sized community event, had a lot of good reaction from our citizens. We refer to our community cookout on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, from twelve to three. And then we'll have our monthly Facebook Live event. We've had several, some, some case updates. We had several financial transaction card frauds that our detectives are working. And then a, one of our store burglary that our detectives are viewing via the possible lead information. Again, potential subjects south of us. Looks like we're trying to connect the dots to some other areas, Roswell, Alpharetta, where these same burglaries have occurred. With our detectives are working those at this time. Any questions on the monthly, monthly report? And then our UCR report, it was also contained in this, for this month. Overall, our overall part one crimes, we're only step back, our violent crimes, looks like they're, they're up. And it's going to be domestic related, some of our violent crimes that we've had for the month of April were domestic related, and that's the, the reason for the increase from, from looking at it. Pro property crimes are down, and then our total part one crimes for the month, all crimes are down as well. And then you see our, our traffic data, arrest data, and, and those numbers there. So any, any questions? Yes, sir.
I was wondering, it says that Friday is the day that we have most accidents. Is that typical each month, is it Friday?
It changes from month to month. I can't per se right now, but I think last month was Saturday. But we look at, our analyst looks, compiles all the data, the dates and times of the accidents. And then many time for our traffic enforcement operations, and we get this report out to patrol, is to get in those areas and look for the area that we think are the contributing factors based off the data from our accident reports and, and conduct traffic control that way to, to, in an effort to reduce those accidents.
Is there an area that has more than others, like Interstate or Riverstone or?
Interstate, if you look on the report that much of this report here. Let me see, I thought I had areas of concern for the traffic accidents. I believe last month, and it, it stays pretty constant, it's really, it's normally your highest congested area. Riverstone is one where we have, we've had a good many of our accidents for the month. Coming Highway and five, and five seventy-five. But I think Riverstone and Coming Highway, if I'm not mistaken, lead, lead five seventy-five the number of accidents.
So I've noticed more police activity on Riverstone lately than in the past. Maybe I've just noticed it more, but I just wondered if that might be why we have more patrols over there.
Yes, sir. That's one of the reasons is, is the, from the strategies we have from our, from meetings and the data we look, data driven to, to try to reduce those accidents.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I know going that way every day, there, there's, there's an accident, it seems like every day or every other day at twenty and five seventy-five, just Canton Marketplace area up there.
Yes, sir.
Is that, it's just due to the sheer numbers, vehicles there, or?
A lot of it's due to the sheer numbers. A lot of it's due to what we call contributing factors that follow them too close, where cars are rear-ended, fail to yield, vehicles pull out in the roadway in front, or make a turn at an intersection when they don't have the right way to go, or think they have the right way to go and pull out in front of someone. That's the majority of our accidents, contributing factors on Coming Highway right there. Yes, sir.
Seems like, I know on the exit ramp from five seventy-five on two twenty, seems like there's been a good many accidents, like rear-end collisions, like somebody's looking to the left and then the car in front of them stops, you know?
Normally, yes, sir. They, the whole, they don't, they look left and don't look back right to make sure the car goes and, and have an accident there. And then turning from, to go northbound in that turning lane where the caution, the, the light is, there have been several accidents there, which were, we have sent in, or sent email to DOT to come out and look at that intersection and see if there's anything we can do to correct that problem.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions about that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have in your agenda package the minutes, draft minutes from May the second, twenty nineteen council meeting. Is there any changes, corrections to be made to those?
I move to approve.
Ma'am? Okay, one, one thing I would like, before we do that, there is one thing I would like to either correct or let me find it again there. Under E regarding the Jones Building, I'm quoted, it says, "Mayor Higgin stated Canton should be a destination and not like every other city with retail and restaurants in downtown." I, I should have said, if I didn't say, be a destination and not like every other city with only. I'd like to insert the word only retail restaurant because I was interested in something else being downtown as well. So that's what I meant to say, and I'd like to add that if that's, if that's stressable.
I move to approve with the change.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay. All right. Ten minute public input period. Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'll be exceedingly very brief. My name is Thomas Weaver, and I reside at one thirty-one Old Maryetta Road. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge several, many of you who responded to the mass email that I sent in regards to the LPR machines. I hope that you reviewed that material carefully. I would just ask that prior to your future consideration this evening in regards to the matter that you take into consideration, the information that I had shared with you, and hopefully that'll be part of your conversation and dialogue at the appropriate time for discussion and potential action. And secondly, on the behest of the comments made by Councilman Goodman and in the conversation between the mayor and the police chief, it was also in the paper today, there's been a rash of not only just accidents as far as just regular commuters or citizens, but there's also been a rash of accidents in regards to large trucks. You may recall the truck turnover there by Methodist Church over there where I believe Councilmember Wilson attends. And then there was also the logging truck that overturned in Lower Beth. Spoke with the police chief prior to the meeting, his team responded to that incident. Several large logs that could have killed someone fell from the bridge into the interstate. Granted, that's not our jurisdiction, that's in the county, but still, it did happen. And members of your team and Mr. Pepper's team did respond to that. And not to, let's not forget the chemical spill at the chicken plant last year. So perhaps in looking at the conversation about accidents, taking into consideration also what the press has covered in regards to the major truck overturns, please, and see if there's any connection or link or anything that can be done there also. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lane Kirby Wood. Welcome.
Hi, y'all. Thank you first, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak. Going to do a little recap of my tenure here in Canton, if you'll indulge me. I moved here thirteen and a half years ago on New Year's Eve, and I promised myself that I would not get involved in anything for five whole years. And I held at my end of that bargain, and then eight years ago, I got involved. And I've hit the ground running ever since. And I started out, starting the community garden up under the water tower at Big Oak. And if you've never seen it, it's beautiful, but it needs a little love right now. But I've shifted my focus to this other little project that I started called the Etowah Film Festival. It's going to be a little four-day party coming up next weekend, starting Thursday. This idea was born after I attended the Love Your Shorts Film Festival in my former hometown of Sanford, Florida. I came home and I, the entire trip home, all four hundred and eighty mile, or I'm sorry. I made notes, speaking into my phone, making notes. How can we do it? What's our inventory? Is the city ready for this? Who can I get involved? And the mayor appointed me to Canton Tourism five years ago. And in full disclosure here, as of January, I'm now the chairman of that committee. And I've cussed you often for that, Mr. Mayor, but we're making progress there. I called Billy, and I asked Mr. Peppers if this was the kind of tourism that Canton was, was wanting. Is this where we should be spending our time, our energy, and our focus? And he said, absolutely, what do you need? I said, I have no idea. I've never done this before, but I know who to ask. And the first person I asked was Billy. The next person I talked to was tourism. And I kind of spread the word around that I was thinking about doing this. And next thing you know, I've got a twenty-eight-year-old business partner that looks like Buddy Holly in Groovy. So my groovy partner is a full-time filmmaker and pretty cool guy, pretty groovy dude. He couldn't be here tonight, and he apologizes for that, but he spent most of the morning at the theater doing logistics and trying to, the technology end of it. So it's pretty exciting to see Canton find its footing and to watch the growth and redevelopment, and then watch new residents like me, new, thirteen and a half years ago, I'm still the new kid, to kind of pick up the mantle and go. So I want to take this moment, first commend you for your steady-handed approach to most of this growth and redevelopment and revitalization. And also to personally invite you and a plus one to the next big downtown event, the Etowah Film Festival at Canton Theater, May twenty-third through twenty-sixth. You have swag bags in your seat, I understand a couple of you have already stashed yours, do not have to carry. If you'll kind of lift them and get a little idea of the heft, that's your community support. That's who is supporting San, Sanford, it's interchangeable, Canton. The hospital, Synovus, the Chamber of Commerce, the city, the Kells with their support, Nick Estes with Stouts, you guys have all stood up, bought in, got your swag bags. So just the heft of that bag shows you that there was definitely time for this kind of event. And Brenton, I thank you all so very much for allowing us the opportunity to bring eighteen filmmakers and a film that's premiering literally in Cannes, France, on the twentieth, but it's making its national debut here Friday night, the twenty-fourth, at Canton Theater. So thank you to the city, Angela, for keeping me legal, to the entire business community that's sponsoring us. And by the way, there is an Etowah Film Festival that says Canton, Georgia on it, that's going to be worn. I have no idea what I'm going to do next year to top this, but I already have reformation column saying, hey, can we do this next year? I'm like, let me get through this one. Just let me get through this one. So thank you all so very much for the support. Please be my guest next Thursday night, the Student Films premiere, six o'clock. Cherokee High, Cherokee County High School Films will open at six to eight, and then eight to ten are college films from all over. Then Friday night, big gala party, dress up, and you better be with who you're supposed to be with because it's going to be live streamed. Very much. Any questions, anybody, or?
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Have you started planning next year's Film Festival yet?
Oh, there's already a notebook with ideas and, yeah.
I knew this.
Northside Hospital gave me Band-Aids, and when they brought them, there's the cutest little things in your bag. And they said, so because it's your first year event, this is all we could do this year? But next year, you're getting the whole tourniquet. I'm like, sc-.
Thank you so much, Lane. It's going to be wonderful.
It's going to be a blast. And so, yeah, be my guest, you got a plus one ticket, you got credentials. Here's the, here's the thing, your credentials that say sponsor, just walk right in. And then there's also one that says all-access pass, that's for your plus one, and bring them. I don't care who wears those. If you can't come Thursday or Friday or Saturday, give them to somebody that can because I just want fannies and seats. We want it to look good because I have a couple of local photographers that are going to be popping things up onto social media, and we want this theater, you know, the theater to look pretty full. And it's going to be exciting. So come on. And a couple of you do not have T-shirts in your bags. Attached to the outside, you have a ticket that is redeemable for your shirt. So bring that ticket to the theater, go to the merchandise table, get your T-shirt, come play.
Thanks. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Lane. We appreciate all your efforts there, I assure you. Thank you. Okay. Kathy Johns.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Council. My name is Kathy Johns, and I am speaking on behalf of the homeowners and HOA Board of Park Village Subdivision.
Sorry about that. While this is a rather unusual and complicated situation, I will do my best to summarize it in a nutshell. Park Village was originally part of the Bluffs Development, but was unfortunately a victim of the recession in two thousand and eight. The original developer filed bankruptcy and United Community Bank foreclosed on the property. Much of the surrounding property was sold back to the city and county for future development, and the already subdivided and cleared residential lots were sold to investors and builders to complete the subdivision. Piedmont Residential bought the lots and began building and selling homes in Park Village in, I believe, two thousand and fourteen. All potential home buyers, including me, my neighbors here tonight, and virtually all of the other home buyers, were told and continue to be told by Piedmont sales reps that they will be paving the streets once the subdivision is built out. This includes homes which have rear entrance driveways on alleys. We all relied on this assurance when we bought our homes. I have emails from Piedmont where they acknowledged that they will be paving the roads once built out. At one of our HOA meetings, we were personally told by a Piedmont rep that they would, once, once it was built out. Then suddenly, this past fall, they informed us that they are not responsible for paving, that the city is. They claim they have paid add-on fees for each permit to cover the paving. This has been somewhat confirmed with city officials to an extent, but I have yet to receive any definite confirmation of this and whether the city will be responsible for one hundred percent of the cost or just a portion. Most recently, the last stretch of homes are being built on what is referred to as the alleys. Again, these are rear-entry homes whose driveways are accessed via these alleys. As with the others, these buyers were told and continue to be told that the alleys would be paved once built out. Piedmont continues to use and abuse these alleys for their construction. Upon subsequent inquiry with the city, I am now being told the alleys are private and would not be included in any paving project, and that the HOA is responsible for paving them. When we took over management of the HOA from the declarant just over one year ago, we were never told this, nor do we have the funds to do this. This is now causing animosity and a division in our friendly little neighborhood. On one hand, we can't ignore the needs of the alley homeowners who were told their roads would be paved, just like the rest of us. On the other hand, we can't expect all of the other homeowners who don't use them to have to pay for them. These alleys are being used by the public, by the builder, and by the city for trash pickup, and have been utilized for the past, well, since they started building, for the past five, seven years. It is presumed that the add-on fees for paving are being paid to the city on these alleyway homes just as they were for the other homes. Now, this is typically an issue which is covered by a bond filed with the city by the original developer. Unfortunately, as I understand it, this development was started right around the time the city took over management of city roads and permits from the took over management of city roads and permits from the county. As with anything else, it was a bit of a learning process. And unfortunately, this one apparently slipped through the cracks and no bond was filed with the city, which now leaves us in the predicament we're in with nowhere to turn but to you. In conclusion, we ask that the city please provide us with a definitive answer to the question of whether or not the city will be paving our roads and alleys and to what extent. And if not 100%, we ask that you support us in our endeavors to get Piedmont to live up to their promises to all of us that they would be paving the roads and alleys. We ask that this situation be looked into as soon as possible while the builder is still actively building and selling so that we can put a stop to this fraud that is being perpetrated by Piedmont on innocent homebuyers and to the detriment of us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. George Ramsey.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have some questions, but I can wait during council introduce items if you prefer.
Um, no, I think, go ahead if you like, ask the question.
Okay. I went over to see what was going on, just for myself. And so I did have a couple of questions. I know that we, are we currently collecting an add-on fee for each home that is constructed?
The add-on fees were created based on the number of lots at a certain date that were not built, so padded but not built. And that add-on fee was created based on those new lots coming in. And as they were coming in, the builder was assessing a fee on those lots to pay for the public roadways within that project to help offset the cost of paving.
And so are they current, still being collected?
They are.
Did the developer originally state that they would pave the streets up to the city grade before turning them over? Did we have any conversation with the current developer?
I don't recall. That was before I got here. So I'm assuming the add-on fee was placed in in 2014, maybe early 2015.
The add-on fee, City Council, some of the members that have been on the council for a while, I've been involved in working through these issues with City Council. We had a consulting firm come in, look at all of the streets associated with the issue of streets that did not have that finished topping on those. Park Village was one of those. City Council, and I believe it was in 2014, possibly 2013, did implement add-on fees in some of, a major portion of subdivisions that did have unfinished streets. The developer that initially started Park Village did go through bankruptcy. The bank did take it back. An investor group purchased the undeveloped lots and remaining lots that were on the ground. That investor group then turned around and sold lots that they owned to other builders within the development. But we have been collecting that add-on fee to go towards finishing those streets that were proposed to be public streets. The recorded plats reflect that the alleys were private. I've never seen anything in any record that they were ever proposed to be city-maintained. Those were always proposed as private accessways.
The alleys?
Yes.
I believe we have what, almost just about $1,300 in the add-on fee collection in the escrow?
No, that's a per-unit fee. We have about 105,000 collected. And we had that particular neighborhood reviewed as an option in cost, so we would know what the cost would be to pave it. And it was right around $320,000, I think, to pave Park Village. And in August of 2018, a representative of Piedmont reached out to the city, and we had a meeting with them. And they asked us in the meeting about paving in that neighborhood. And at that meeting, they told us it was their plan that they would pave in that neighborhood. Then they came back sometime around the 1st of September and said, no, we're not going to do that. So I don't know if the person who was managing the project said they were going to do it, spoke to somebody at the company, and the company said, no, we're not going to do that at all. You know, what our impression of that conversation was that if they were willing to pave the roadways, we would give them what we had collected in add-on fees to help go towards that cost, and they could just finish out the neighborhood as the developer. But at some point, they decided they didn't want to do that. They were just going to contribute the add-on fees, and that would be it. So from, the question for Ms. Johns is, our expectation has been with the add-on fees that the city will pave the project. But the add-on fees were put in place so that when they reached a certain level or we got a certain percentage, and we had the additional funds on the city side to pay for whatever the gap might be, that's when the project would get done. So that makes it similar to Iris Park, Great Sky, River Green, and the other neighborhoods at that time.
So we've collected about a third of the cost that will be for paving these roads to make them public roads?
That's correct. But the thing about that is, that cost was just calculated on the mileage or the linear feet of public roadways. And so it would not have been calculated on what shows up in the plat as private, which would be the alleys.
Right. So are we going to hold those funds in escrow until that is completely built out and then we'll pay?
We hold all of the add-on fees and they're tracked. So when a builder comes in and seeks a permit on a lot, a building permit on a lot, they pay the add-on fee at that time. The add-on fee is tracked by address within that development. And so we run reports on developments throughout the year to see what we have collected in add-on fees in that particular development. So we've got one for Great Sky, we've got one for Park Village.
And I understand that one reason we don't go ahead and pave just as they're finished is because construction trucks would keep coming in and out and tear up whatever we'd just already paved. So we wait until everything's built out before we start paving?
We haven't waited on everything until they're built out. We try to get as much done as possible. If you'll recall, three years ago, we contracted with a group to come in and do a review of all the city-maintained streets. That review did not include these streets that had not been top-coded. And so we're, you know, we're well into our fourth year on that pavement management plan. And one of the things that we've at least talked about, Public Works, my office, the Finance Director, is, okay, in year five, are we going to try to leap into a future year, or is this a good year for us to say, jump in some of these neighborhoods where we do have some add-on fees? But ultimately, that's, you know, we've got to sit down and look at those numbers and see what we have in sploshed money available for paving, what we can offset with add-on fees. And we're not likely to pave a road that's still got a lot of major construction on it just because we don't want to damage it.
And I don't think the city could withhold a CO until the developer says he'll pave the roads.
That would be for the attorney to give an opinion on.
I think what you got is, you know, this is not a new problem for us. I mean, this has come up numerous times. And it's been a mess for those that were developed during that period and before. I think the problem is, you know, the base problem was the city didn't get a performance bond. The development was approved. That development's been approved, but the city didn't get a performance bond. Had it gotten a performance bond, this would have never occurred. Because then if the developer went under, then the city could move right in, have cash to bond, and move on with the paving. But that has happened in so many areas of this city at that time that we've had to go back and do some things. And I don't think there's any doubt that the city has a responsibility here. I think we have a responsibility to do the public streets in the subdivision. The timing is one thing. When do you do that? If indeed, and I want to make this, I want to see if this is correct, are you saying that some of the quote "alleys" were shown as private on the plans that were approved?
Yes, sir. On the recorded final plats, there are two alleys that are within Park Village. And recorded plats for Park Village show those two alleys as private.
Okay. So in my opinion, that would be illegal for us to do anything on private property, which would be private property at that time.
I think we can make it clear to the developer who's out there now that it is their responsibility on those alleys where they're doing work. Those are not public streets. And, you know, similar to what we did in Great Sky, if we need to post a sign at the entrance of that street, you know, letting future homeowners know that that's a private alley, it's up to the homeowners association, ultimately after it's paved to maintain it or what have you, you know, we can do that as well.
That's great. Couple of questions on the, I know in some of these cases, we've discussed not withholding the COs but withholding building permits. Are we, are they still getting new building permits on the public streets, what's shown on the plats as public streets?
Yes.
And also on the alleys?
Well, all of the lots that have access to the alleys also front on proposed city-maintained public streets.
Okay. So the alley is just for the rear garage access?
That's correct.
And are we collecting any? So I guess we're collecting fees from those same people, but for public road, not the alley. I guess my question was, are we collecting any add-on fees for that alley?
No.
If they face the public road, I guess we're collecting for the public streets, right?
Correct.
The initial determination on the add-on fees was that if you collected it on a private street, you're basically accepting that street for public maintenance.
Sure you would.
And do we, in the meeting, were they offered or said their plan was to pave those streets or those alleys? Do we have anything in writing or anything from them?
No, they just came to meet with us and asked us about the streets in there and let us know that it was their intention to finish out the project. They wanted to know what had been collected in add-on fees. Of course, we gave them that number. And we said, look, if you want to pave the neighborhood, it's probably cheaper for you to do it than for us to go out and get a bidding process like we have to do, and you may be able to do it quicker at a different standard. If that's what you want to do, we'll give you whatever we've got in the bank on add-on fees to finish out the roads in there. And that seemed good to go when they left the meeting. And then a few weeks later, they decided they didn't want any part of that project.
How many more lots are to be built out there?
There's not that many vacant lots left to have permits pulled. I'm not sure of the exact number. I can get that information emailed to council, but there's not that many lots left to pull permits and build on.
I would like to see that information, just what's left and what those permits could be. If we could get that information, that would be great. But if it's whatever's left, I think until this matter is resolved, if it's legal to do so, I think we should consider withholding the building permits for those remaining lots until at least the alleys are...
I wanted to ask Mr. City Attorney tonight, if a private road is used for utilities, for, you know, checking water lines and trash and that, after a certain number of years in Georgia code, does it automatically become a private, I mean, a public street?
Not those type. Usually, those ones designated on the plat that way stay private, and they become the responsibility generally of the HOA to maintain. And there's nothing that would turn them into public streets unless the city, for some reason, went in and just started maintaining it, which would be unusual.
Okay. So there are two, you say, on the plat that are...
Two alleys, that is correct.
Two alleys. So let me summarize and just make sure I heard everything correctly. When this is built out, with six more lots, she said, six more, six more, is the city planning to pave those streets, those public, those, if they turn them over to us, they become public streets and we will pave them?
We will pave them. I don't know a date. I can't give you a date on that. But yes, they will be paved. And we will use the add-on fees that we've collected towards the final cost of whatever it is to pave out there. And at that point, they are, I mean, since we're collecting add-on fee, they're basically public streets anyways.
Right, right. Maybe we could get some updates as we go along about timing on that, as you look at some of the projects that we have for street paving?
Now, one of the things we could consider out there is if, for whatever reason legally, the developer doesn't have to pave those alleys, if they've got, there's some case law or whatever that wouldn't allow them to do it, we could get that priced and see if there's something we could work out with the homeowners association to have it paved at the same time so they don't have to get their own contractor and all that.
So that...
There may be savings, there may not.
So that all could be paved at once?
Possibly. I mean, we'll have to look into that, but that might be an option.
If you would keep us updated on when those projects come up, I'd be very interested because I really feel, I feel for them. They couldn't help it because the guy went bankrupt and the bond lapsed and it wasn't reinstated. So I think we have a responsibility for them.
Well, and as you know now, our bonds that we require of builders have changed significantly, you know, due to these issues that came up from...
Right, current, we learned.
15 years ago.
Right.
And they couldn't help it that the city didn't live up to this responsibility and have a performance bond at the time. And that would have solved the whole problem. I mean, it wouldn't be a problem if that had happened. But Ken, you have something else?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, I just wanted to let you all know and remember that when this study was done and the add-on fees were proposed, like I said, you know, that was five years ago, those fees were based upon that study done by the consultant. And it was for just finishing the topping of the street, which is a one-and-a-half-inch topping. It did not include anything in regards to any kind of deep patching or anything of that nature that may be required as part of finishing streets out and that sort of thing. That add-on fee was based upon that study, and it was a three-year average of G-dot payment pricing for paving in 2014. I'm quite sure that asphalt prices are probably higher than they were then. That could be part of the discrepancy between the collection of add-on fee and the contractors, quote, the city in regards to the $300,000 fee. Just wanted to make sure that council was aware of those issues.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Peppers, the study was done five years ago. Since that time, prices have increased on just about everything. Are the add-on fees that we're charging now adequate? Do we need to review our pricing? I would understand how our fees should remain the same for existing subdivisions that are not finished out. But should we do a look and see if we need to up our charges for new subdivisions?
So we don't have any add-on fees for new subdivisions? We don't have any add-on fees in new pods in new subdivisions because now they're held to the standard that when they do the work in that new pod or that new subdivision, they have to topcoat the roads, they have to put in a substantial performance bond to get the work done. So really, all we're doing is dealing with the issues that would have occurred prior to 2014. And so, you know, the issue that you get into as it relates to the add-on fees is that, you know, it's kind of spotty as to which lots in which neighborhoods were not built as at that time. And so you may have two houses that were built, a vacant lot, and two more that were built. And so I think that's part of the reason why we haven't changed the fee is because it just doesn't make sense that this person comes in and theirs is a couple dollars higher than this one. It's easier for us to track, you know.
I certainly don't want to raise anything unfairly. I just wanted to make sure that work and materials were adequately paid for. But I'm not looking to raise fees.
Well, and as Mr. Patton said, and I recall on part... Well, and, and as Mr. Patton said, and I recall on Park Village, there was a substantial amount of base, base work that was being done in there. And it's just from the fact that, you know, the roads were never topped and they sat basically in a condition for so long while the development was moving from one developer to the next. You know, that's not really the issue of the person who's buying the new house in there. You know, some of it, some of it falls to that period in between. And so I'm sure that was part of the reason why they just did it on that top coating.
Thank you.
I, I was on council when this subdivision was annexed into the city. And I remember at that time, this was going to be a, a destination for people who worked in the bluffs. And, you know, we envisioned having a lot of industry there in the bluffs. And, and there was even public transit from the blu, there was outlined in the original plans, public transit from the bluffs over to Park, over to the subdivision, the entire development. Since that time, lots of things have happened. The bluffs hasn't panned out and it looks like the developer went bankrupt. And so I do think that we have a responsibility to these people that, that, you know, bought, they're in good faith, thinking they were going to live in a, a nice village with good roads. So we've seen this before and we're having to clean up some of the things that happened back in 2008 and since. So I'm glad to hear us say that we're going to be worked toward paving their streets.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for, thanks for everybody for coming out.
Okay. We have obviously deviated from our normal 10-minute public input period.
And thank you, thank you, Mayor, for letting me do that.
Sometimes you have to do that, but I, I think we need to kind of get back on track. And now if you have someone that, you know, anyone can get on the agenda. If they will notify our city clerk one week in advance, just tell them what they want to speak about. And that way, we do know, would have a conversation, a dialogue with them. Normally, our 10-minute public input period is a monologue in which any member of the public can come and bring an issue before the council. The council then will consider putting it on like on the work session for the council to discuss or direct staff to take certain action and so forth. And then report back to, to those individuals. So we will now continue with our 10-minute input period. And I understand Ms. Gomez, you hear, and she got here a little bit late and didn't get signed on, but we would like to go ahead and hear from her. She has an issue. Speak into the microphone, please. Yeah, as much as you can.
It's, it's not easy for me to speak in public. Can you please help me? I want to explain to you.
Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. My wife Candy and my sister-in-law Millie, they just came from New York. They opened a beauty salon here in Camden. And they got a one-year permit to get everything straight. So they got the license to operate the business from New York and they were in the middle of transferring everything here and taking some tests to get everything legal together. And they got the place already closed by the city because it reached a year that the city gave it to them to comply. We're here today to just ask you for an extension to get everything together. My wife just got an ac, an accident, has a broken leg in the middle of all of that. And we're just asking for an extension if it's possible to get this together. Thank you.
Billy, you want to, well, maybe you, you may want to explain to the council basically what that, that just, I don't know, I, I didn't understand every word, so.
Sure. So, so in the state of Georgia, we have professional licensing for cosmetology. That's one of the things that's handled in the professional licensing commission. For us, we require that you have a state of Georgia professional license for cosmetology if you are going to operate a salon. In this case, when Ms. Gomez came to Georgia, she had an existing license from the state of New York and was working towards her license with the state of Georgia and had filed the paperwork for all of that. And so the city issued her a business license to be able to open up her salon. Between the time that license was issued, she was not able to obtain her license from the state. And so when her license came up for renewal this year and she did not have a state license, the city could not issue her an occupancy license for a salon. And so in discussing the issue with Ms. Gomez, she was looking for another possible use for the building that she's in. The building that she's in is, is zoned as office residential transition. And there's a very limited category of uses for that space. She understands that she can't have a salon there until she gets her license from the state. And I believe one of the, one of the issues with her license from the state is the fact that the test is only given in English.
Yes.
And so, of course, the city has no part in that state licensing. So I've provided her with information for her House Representative's member and her state senator and suggested that maybe she reach out to them on that state-related issue. But the bottom line is there's a very limited amount of things that can be done in that ORT zoning category. I believe florist is one, tobacco sales is one. I don't recall the third. It's, but it's a very limited category outside of what she's currently doing. And so she had asked if she could come here and appeal. And of course, you know, that's something that, you know, we, we can't offer a business license to someone that doesn't meet our standards, you know. And so, you know, really there's only two appeals out there, ones to the state and ones to the city. And unfortunately with the city on the salon, you know, we have to follow that state license. So, I mean, I think it's good that you know what's going on. I don't know what the staff can do about it though, at this point.
So this is, um, this is something where the potential use is not permitted in the zoning that's there?
The salon is permitted there. She can do that business there. But since she can't get her license from the state, she's trying to find another use for that facility that she has.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The other use that she wants to use is not permitted in that zoning category.
She wanted to do an antique store and it's specifically not listed in.
The thing is like, I don't have, I put a lot of money in the business already. So I don't have no more money to put another business. So it's better for me to get an extension because now I can continue try to pass the test in English. And I don't know if they can do some extension and do it in Spanish. But the thing is a little hard. It's only two points and I got lose twice already. So maybe I can pass the, the third time because, you know, a lot of stress sometimes. You don't have the brain clear to pass a test. But I try my best to do it, but I need extension for the, for the license for the business because it's closed. And my lease is running and I need to pay the bills and I can't do it if it is not open.
Okay. Anyone have a question there?
Is it within our power to give an extension or are we hogtied by the state?
So here's the thing. Ultimately, the occupational license is the city's license. Our issue is that we require for that particular occupational license that you also have a state professional license. So, I mean, that's kind of our issue.
How, how can you operate a business like it's cosmetology? How can you operate that without a state license? You can't, can you?
You would not be able to, as far as I'm concerned.
Regardless of what the city did, I don't, I don't know how you could do that because of state.
But is that why she's asking?
That is certified and licensed through the Secretary of State's office.
And so in Georgia, the issue is that they don't reciprocate licenses with other states. At least in that particular licensing field.
Is she asking for an extension until she can get her, her cosmetology license? Is that what she, is that what you're asking?
For the beauty salon, for the occupation of the building, yes.
I, I don't know how we can permit the operation of a state-licensed business in the city. That would not be, that would not be legal, I would assume, under state law.
Right. I assume that she's not operating a business. She's, she wants to wait to operate her business when she gets her license.
She was issued an initial occupational license from the city for that space over a year ago based on the fact that she was in that transition and she had the New York license and there was some back and forth with state on her setting that up. It's just never come to fruition. And so this year, when it was time to renew the license, there was not a state license in place to renew it to.
So she's not still in that transitional stage?
I'm in the transition. I have still my license from New York. It is valid.
Right.
And I have it 25 years with this license with no problem in New York. So when I came here, it was totally different. That's why it happened.
But I don't think Mr. Rushbridge, Georgia recognizes her New York license.
Apparently not.
So you would have to get a Georgia license?
I'm doing. I'm in my process, but the business is closed.
And that's what, is that what you're trying to do?
Yes.
How long do you think it would be before you could get your Georgia cosmetology license?
Couple of months maybe because I make the schedule and I'm going to try the first test. If you know, I want to try to see if they can do in Spanish.
But you've had a year and you weren't able to do it in a year?
It's like a lot of things happen. I move, I knew in Georgia, I knew in this city.
And I understand you had an accident and that probably?
A lot of things happen in the way, that's why. But I try my best to do it.
I understand.
I, I went twice already.
I think Mr. Patton wanted to speak on something.
You have something? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I think Ms. Gomez is asking for city council to give consideration for one of two options. Her first preference would be that city council would consider granting an extension on business license for a period of time to allow her to try to pass the state exam and get that certificate. She also talked with our office in regards to having antique sales, used furniture, second-hand items, things of that nature. Our zoning ordinance does not allow that as permitted use in the ORT zoning district. She possibly, as a second option, would ask city council to allow her to use that space for that use. I also would point out and remind city council that this is a piece of property in which city council amended the text and permitted uses table relative to ORT to allow that personal services of the person with the vitamins and the shakes and that a couple of years ago. There had been discussion about rezoning the property or seeking an amendment to the text of ordinance. That's the route it was chosen.
Well, it's going to take, you know, a certain amount of time certainly to do something like that. But my concern is that the, the New York license apparently is not valid in the state of Georgia. If that's the case, then can we allow the operation of a profession basically without a license in Georgia?
That I think, that, I don't think we can, but I think she's asking for an extension to get her Georgia license.
An extension of what? She has no license.
Extension of the time.
Then, there is no license, so you can't extend it.
Extend the time that she can, she can not operate her business, but, but have her license so she can open that business. Is that right?
So, so if you come to Georgia, you don't have a license to practice medicine, what would you be extending to get that license?
Actually, I guess she could just, when she got her license, then she'd be able to operate. But right now, she can't operate and we can't shut it, we don't have anything to shut down, do we? So we're just saying that you need to get your Georgia cosmetology license, I think, aren't we?
I don't know any other choice, but. Yellen, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. I know certain professions, the owner has to be the certified person and some, an employee can be the certified person. Is cosmetology, does the owner have to be the certified person? And is this a sole proprietorship or does she have a certified person that works there? And could that be used? It's just a question.
Ours requires that the owner be the certified person. Now, what you may have in a salon is you may have the certified owner as the person and then have additional licensees that are renting booth space within that salon. But you wouldn't be able to have the salon without having the owner have that certification.
Okay, that was my question.
Also, it's my understanding the state requires the owner of the salon to have a state certificate as well as each of the employees that operate within that salon have to have a state certification.
Okay.
Okay.
So much for that idea.
Ms. McGee?
Ms. Gomez, thank you for coming. I don't want to do anything to hold up your business. How often is the test given for your Georgia license?
Anytime.
You can take it at any time?
Yeah, anytime.
So you're asking for an extension on time to get your license?
I, I asked him for extension to open the business because if it's closed, it's more stressful for me how I want to go concentrate and pass the test. My business is closed and I need to pay the bills.
Right.
So that's why I want to open and continue try pass the, the test.
Up until this point, have you been operating your business?
A little by little because it's like, I'm not there all the time. It's just by appointment. And my sister, she only do haircut for men, like $10 boss. So it's not really going so fast. But I try to be better in the future with more clients when I can set up everything with my license from Georgia and everything. So I can be concentrating and do better business because I was such a fool in New York.
We will do what we can to help you get your business open, but we have to go by state law. So, Mr. Patton, what, what do we need to do to, to help her get this done?
Situation with the city can't occupational tax license. She came into the office and took the note of the one year, the original business license that we issued for her business while she was trying to get that state certification as expired. She is, I think, requesting city council approve our office issuing a business license, even if it's temporary or for a period of time, so that she can operate, take the exam. Secondly, as I mentioned earlier, she would ask city council to allow her to use that space to do the second-hand sales that our zoning ordinance does not allow.
What can we legally do?
I, I don't think we can give her a license to open a business that doesn't allow, that, we can't give her that, that license for a salon as a renewal because the owner doesn't have a state license.
We'd be allowing the operation of a business illegally. So we can't really do that.
Is that what we've done for the past year then?
Well, there's a process while she was getting the license. So sometimes, you know, you issue a license for somebody that, I mean, they haven't even opened their doors yet. You know, they're still working on the rest of their, their process. When we get to the renewal, if everything's not in place, it's clear it's not in place and we can revoke it at that point.
Are there any steps we can take to help get this process done?
It's a state process. I don't think there's anything we can do necessarily to, to push that, you know, other than, you know, consideration to change zoning, a permitted use table.
And, and you, you could speed that up by 30 days. That would be the only, that'd be the only thing, you know, bypass the planning commission. But then we have to hold a public hearing here now. We got two pub, technically we got two public hearings now, so. But we could bypass the one, I guess, with the planning commission. But we could bypass the one, I guess, with the uh, uh, planning commission and come directly to the council. But you still got to do the advertising, you still got to do the uh, public hearing and then make a decision. So I imagine that's thirty days anyway, maybe more.
At least with the notification.
So, Ms. Gomez, when you get your light, your cosmetology license, then you would, you would be able to operate your salon, right? So that's where we are.
Yeah. I called already and the numbers you gave me in the morning, I called places to see I can do it no more faster. But I'm, I'm worried about a state, a closed business because how I want to pay the bills if I'm not working.
Right. We can't allow, you know, it's not up to us to allow you to operate a business if you don't have a license.
Only for six month at least.
I don't, I don't know how we can. I mean, I want to help you, but I don't, I don't think, it seems like our hands are pretty much.
If I have a, if I have a, the, that license, the tax ID license for the business, so I can hide in somebody with cosmetology license and they can work. So that way, the business can be legal, working, and I can go slow and pass my test. Because if I have a lot of thing, I can pass the test. It's another language, I'm a Spanish girl.
They don't give the test in your language?
No, not in my language, that's why. I took it before in New York, it was in Spanish too.
Right, and they wouldn't allow you to have an interpreter?
No.
Ultimately, if she wants a salon at that location until she has a business, until she has a state license.
Right.
She's gonna have to find somebody with a state license to own that business to operate at that.
But then she couldn't perform the duties of a cosmetologist without a state license?
No, but she could manage the business.
Could do that if somebody had.
And a business license could be issued.
Correct.
From the, the, from the city's perspective, if there were an owner applying who was licensed.
So she could sell her business for twenty-five dollars to someone who has a license?
If somebody came in with the required license and applied, then the city would, would give the required license.
We're trying to help you. We cannot break the Georgia.
I really hope you say that.
Anything else? Anyone else? Only thing I can say is, Mr. Peppers, we're gonna put it on you, if you can, if you can do a little more research with our city attorney there and see if there's any other way, then, and, and let us know at our, you know, next meeting or about, via email, then maybe we can, we can see. But I, I'll be honest, I don't know of anything that you can legally do in a hurry and get, and get it accomplished. Okay? Thank y'all very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. That was a long ten-minute public input period, yeah, didn't it? Long one.
Lots to say.
Work session. Okay. Under old business discussion and possible action on the planning commissions recommend, recommendation to amend development code chapter 106, glossary and chapter 107, resource management, and to amend chapter 1111, design standards for sanitary sewer.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, if you recall, we did conduct a public hearing in regards to these ordinance amendments. The ones relative to chapter 106 glossary, that's definitions. Uh, 107, resource management, that dealt with a section within that relative to our floodplain regulations. Then uh, the amendment in chapter 111 dealt with the liner on the sanitary sewer line. And the packages that you have did include the amended languages, uh, council had requested in regards to the uh, uh, liner on the sanitary sewer. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion, uh, Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Yon seconded the motion. Uh, the on, the only heartburn I have, and I, it's not all that hot, okay, not all that bad, but is, is actually the mention of a, a product by name in there, even though it says later on that similar products may be used but are subject to the approval of the city. It just kind of bothers me a little bit that we use an actual trade name of a product. Uh, certainly gonna give the idea that that's what we're specifying, even though it doesn't necessarily say that. But, okay, if everybody, everybody's okay with that wording, then uh, I'll survive. We have a motion, we have a second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmember.
Thank you. Okay, discussion of possible action on the award of the downtown parking structure design contract Clark Patterson Lee in the amount of two hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Um, Eric Fortner, the deputy building official is here too, if you have any technical questions on the parking structure itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we brought to approve this, what would be the start, starting date and what would be a projected date?
Um, I would, I would hope to have the notice proceed out by the first of June. And then, um, I believe that they have a proposed timeline of uh, twenty-six weeks to complete the design. So I guess that would put them at, um, how many months is that? Six months, design? And then construction, they're proposing nine months for construction.
And the finished date would be when, you think?
I'm sorry?
The completion date, what do you expect? May year?
A year and three months, so next September.
September, October?
Yeah.
With good weather?
Yes.
Uh, what about meetings with council between now and then if, if they're chosen?
Yes, we will have meetings, y'all, we will invite every, um, the council to the meetings. Um, I think we have almost weekly meetings, um, set up.
Community, uh, maybe one community input meeting or charade in there as well. There's a couple of public meetings in there.
Right, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Thank you for clarifying the, the public input sessions, those are my, my major questions. The other one is, is, and I know in our conversations we had in reviewing the proposal, it was discussed, you know, do we need three hundred spaces at that, in that deck, at that location now? Should we consider other parts of the city that may, may need parking in the future? But is, is that part of the design process as far as determining, um, you know, capacity?
Yes.
Usage?
Um, yes, they will, we will, um, meet with them and decide exactly what we want. And, you know, of course, we want council involved with, with that process. Um, they don't have any design set today. We will come up with it as we go along.
Great, thank you.
Um, I wanted to, uh, compliment the evaluation committee. This was a, I know it was our job and I appreciate the work that went into choosing the firm that will be building the parking structure and I'm so excited about it. I just wanted, for the sake of, if anyone asks, uh, the cost for this firm was higher than the cost for the other firm. However, the total points for this was higher, which I assume that the evaluation process took into consideration total points in awarding the contract and not the lesser of the two, uh, costs.
Correct. We, um, we actually met with the committee and got the points before we even opened the amounts of the bids. So, and I, I do want to point out one thing that I did go through. The two finalists, as, as far as how many hours they were putting in and the percentage of money that that would, and Clark Patterson's, um, amount per hour was actually less than the other.
That helps.
Yeah.
We were getting more staff time from Clark Patterson at a lower rate, but it still ended up being a little bit more expensive when they calculated the total project cost.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, that answers my question.
So it was about fifty-one thousand more than the second quote, right? Now, uh, to kind of come off of something that Bill mentioned, if, if, does it cost the same to build a parking deck with a hundred spaces as it does to design one, let's say, to design one with three hundred spaces? I mean, I, I.
So when we, when we.
I mean, is this, is this two hundred and forty-seven thousand, uh, four hundred and twenty dollars? Will that design a three-layer or a four-layer or a one-layer?
When we, when we, when we put out the request for proposal, we put it with a minimum of three hundred parking spaces. That way, we knew that all proposers would be quoting on an exact thing. From the standpoint of this one's not proposing on a hundred and this one's proposing on five hundred, we asked them to propose on three hundred.
Okay.
They all have the same lot to design it on. So, my understanding from listening to them is that the actual design of the deck is gonna be about the same no matter who does it or how many spaces it is. It's how you design the outside of it, how it fits on the land, that is really the cost that we're going into. And one of the reasons why we actually proposed this, this company, uh, for the contract is they made it clear that part of their work is to master plan that site. Not just build a deck on it, but master plan the site so the whole site fits in with downtown.
So then, that, um, that goes to, based on what you said there, Bill, if, if you needed two smaller decks, you'd, it'd cost you twice as much, right?
I'm not sure.
I, I don't know that it would cost you twice as much, but I mean, if we went back to them and said, you know what, we really only want a hundred parking spaces there, then I would probably come back to you and say, then we don't need to build a deck, we just need to figure out how to reline the lot, you know? You know?
I, I totally, I totally agree there. One thing I would ask though, could you go in a little more depth into the, the difference, uh, in the technical points? What, what were the, I mean, how, how were they scored? Um, what, what were those technical points?
Um, so we scored on, hang on, let me pull up, um, get out the actual. So we scored on the qualifications of the firm and personnel, the project approach and understanding, and then the capacity and ca- capability of the firm, and then the overall quality of the proposal. Um, for me, one of the things that really, um, stood out is that on Clark Patterson's proposal, they really highlighted their project manager. And all the projects that they said were similar, the project manager was involved. With the other, um, firm, it was only two of the decks that they are, that they had similar were actually done by the project manager. It didn't even involve the project manager. And then when they came in and, you know, I, I, of course, I don't want to say anything bad about the other firm, but when they came in and talked to us, it wasn't the project manager that presented his, uh, for the firm. It was, uh, another guy with the firm, a, a more principal type guy. Um, another thing is the time for Clark Patterson was about six weeks shorter on design. Clark Patterson didn't come with a design already proposed. They came in with a couple of different options. I mean, they, we still aren't set on a design, but they came into the interview that we had with three different options that were possible. And the other firm came in with one and said, it's gonna be five levels high and at three hundred spaces.
It's a good explanation.
Well, I, I'll go back to what you were saying about the spaces. I think what, I think what we're also trying to do is we're trying to say, tell us how this deck will fit on this site. And if it fits and it looks good and it's two hundred and sixty spaces, that might be okay, you know? If it's three hundred spaces and it looks ridiculous, then, you know, maybe that's not what we want to do. We, we're really trying to fill it out as they're designing it, based on how it looks with this building and the properties around it, you know?
I was just gonna say that the other thing, if I remember correctly from the, the presentation, uh, Clark Patterson was kind of one firm working as one firm where the other one kind of felt like there was a whole bunch of players.
That was, that was one of the other issues, was that Clark Patterson is one engineering firm. The other had a separate civil engineer, separate parking designer, so that makes a difference as well.
Anyone else? I, I will say that I, uh, I sat in on both those interviews and, and Clark Patterson Lee did an excellent job. Uh, they didn't seem to have too many preconceived ideas about, uh, what, what we should have. And, and I think they want to find out more from us what, what we want. And I think that was, was really a plus, plus for them in, in my book. So I think, I think the decision of the, of, of the, uh, various points and everything is probably right on. I think it's very good. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Grant?
Just one, uh, the, the design fees, funding, set splosh fees.
Yes, all of this will come out of splosh for this project.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Okay. Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, okay. Discussion and possible action of, of, let's see, which one are we on now? Probation management?
Ms. Fitz is not here, so.
Okay.
But I did want to explain this to you. So after our last meeting, when she brought up about probation management issues, I have asked her to bring back a sample budget of what it would take if we did probation management in-house and also a copy of a draft intergovernmental agreement if we decided to do probation management. Holly Springs, for instance. Knowing that the third option would be that we could go out to an RFP for a third party to come in and provide that. And we'll bring that in June for discussion because ultimately, it'll become part of the budget process that we're going on at the same time.
So we'll have that, so, work session in June, hopefully?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Discussion and possible action of fixed license plate reader, Chief Mitchell.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, I, uh, I think we presented that last, last meeting and had several discussions, um, with other, with council members, so I don't know if we, for any other questions or any other thoughts about, about the, the system?
Ms. Wilson?
I think we rely on the people that work for us for their expertise. And this is a lease agreement for one year. And the chief has brought it to our attention that we need it to help with the police department apprehending criminals coming into our city, therefore, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Asti seconded that motion. Any other discussion? Mr. Grant?
Uh, first of all, I want to thank the chief for being very patient with, with me today for multiple questions. Uh, uh, and I, I did, one of the last conversations I had with him this afternoon about that was that the access to the data, uh, he did confirm that on the state and federal level, the access would only be triggered by an incident, uh, or a crime and not just someone wanting to access the data for, you know, other purposes.
Correct.
That made me feel a little bit better about it, you know? I do have concerns in, in this issue. I've struggled over it because I really haven't heard any public input. I've had, you know, I've seen a couple of statements on social media, but I haven't personally, you know, had someone coming up to me and saying, I'm concerned about this or my privacy issue. So I struggled with it, um, and, uh, you know, I always want to err on the, on the side of public safety. I think Mrs. Wilson's comments that, you know, a year, um, is what we're looking at. Could be a trial period. My understanding also that the state would keep the data, though even if we had a year of trial period, that state data would, would be in existence for thirty months.
Yes, that data.
Two and a half years.
Retained per, per the state law for, uh, thirty months, yes.
Okay. Again, I, I've been trying to do some research and, you know, read some articles today that Marietta, where they had the fixed license plate readers, the crime had been reduced thirty-four percent compared to others, which was down also, but in, in areas where, um, twelve percent. And, um, then I see, you know, I see articles on the other side on the privacy issue. So again, it, it's, it's tough for me. Always, again, I, I sort of always want to err on the side of public safety, so. Yes.
Anyone else? Ms. McGee.
Thank you for your time yesterday in talking with me and giving me the information. And I understand the reasons to do this. And I don't, I want to support you, I want to support our police department. It would be so much easier for me. It would be so much easier for me if you were asking for six new officers or six new vehicles, but this really gives me heartburn, and people say, what keeps you up about your job? This has kept me up. And I, I'm very concerned about civil liberties, people's privacy, the amount of time and where the door, data would be stored. Also, the data could, probably not, but could be requisitioned by federal or state government, and we would have to comply, and I, I'm very concerned about people's privacy, and I can't support it, and I'm really sorry.
Thank you.
Chief, you know, you know, I had some privacy concerns initially when this first came up. I, I certainly did. But you know, the more I thought about it, I mean, there's cameras everywhere around. I mean, we already got fixed license, well, not fixed, but license plate readers that cruise the streets and so forth and can, you know, pick them up already, and he walked down the sidewalk, and you're probably on several videos of businesses and so forth around. I think it's a little late at this point to be worried about the privacy concerns when it comes to public safety in, in this respect, but it, it took me a little while thinking, because when it first hit me, I thought, no, we don't want to do that. I totally would have grew, would have been screwed on that, but finally, you know, as I thought about it and, and really give it, give it, give it some thought, I think it's the right thing to do. So I appreciate the work that you've done on it, and I, I think, I think the data at the end of that year will tell us if, you know, if it's been beneficial or not, and then the council can make a decision at that point if they want to continue or discontinue.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I know I already seconded the motion, but I'd say, you know, I appreciate you bringing creative ideas. You know, one of the things that I looked at during the conversation at the last meeting was the efficiency that it creates of how many officers you don't have to hire to support this, and I think I can ultimately get over the, the privacy, because I think I lost it when I carried this around all day long, but somehow, I'm being tracked, and, and so, so again, I think it's great to bring a, just a new solution to help us deter crime and fight crime, and then, you know, as Ms. Wilson said, it's, it's a year, so we can always, we're not locked in too, for too long of a term.
Yes.
Anyone else?
One question I would ask, it's more of a procedural question. If council votes to approve this tonight, is it your, is it your goal that this be instituted to start with the October one budget year, or are you wanting to do this before then, which might require a budget amendment in the interim? I guess that's, that's my question.
Sooner. I don't see any reason why to wait.
I, I don't.
When you need it, chief, yesterday?
No, ma'am, we had, we had, during the discussions, budget discussions, we placed it in the October first budget.
Okay. I'd, I'd say, let's move forward with it as much as we can, and then.
And it may not require a budget amendment, I don't know. I mean, we'll just have to, we'll just have to look at it, but if.
Then when it comes back around next year, we'll know whether we want to include it in the budget or not.
Right.
I mean, I mean, even, because we will have had a year, if we were to start, say, effective July one or something like that, or whatever date.
Yes.
That would give us a, a year before the budget was actually approved and finalized and everything for next year.
It, it'll take a little bit of time, I'm sure, to get the, get the contract signed up and, and actually get the equipment out there, so.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Grant?
I'd make one more comment. Again, I've been struggling with this all day, and since the, the thing was brought up, I'd like to say that just because, you know, we were losing privacy with our phones and being tracked and other things, it, it gives me heartburn to say it's okay for us to contribute to, to loss of further privacy, so I just wanted to say that, and, and it, I appreciate all the comments, because it helped me make a decision, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
All members voting for the motion, with the exception of Ms. McGrew and Mr. Grant?
You vote no?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, discussion, possible action of agreement with Cherokee County Board of Commissioners for the eight-hundred megahertz, I guess that's what that is, emergency communication system using SPOSS revenues.
We discussed this at the last meeting, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Yon made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Mr. Estes asked that the Jones Building Discussion be postponed until the June meeting, I believe, so the next item, item F, the SDS Service Delivery Strategy Discussion, is that right?
I think, oh, yes, because new business is the reservoir. If you'll recall, we discussed this at the last meeting.
Oh.
The cities of Waleska.
Oh.
Holly Springs and Woodstock have already approved agreements with Smith Welch to represent them in service delivery negotiations with the county, and we just seek your consent so that we can go ahead and, and put them on a contract to represent the city as part of that service delivery strategy negotiation with those other cities on the same team.
And then you ask us for action tonight?
That's correct. So what you have before you is you have their letter outlining what it is that, that they will provide to the city. I believe we have a five-hundred-dollar retainer for them, and then you've got a resolution that we need to authorize the mayor to sign so that we can move forward with that agreement.
I think the reason for tonight is there are, there are some time constraints as far as the requirement of, of reaching an agreement with the county on the, as far as the service delivery goes. I mean, it could be extended, it may, may be extended, who knows, but I think that would be the reason we need to probably go ahead and move on with that.
So it's just Canton, Holly Springs, and Woodstock, not Waleska?
Waleska is also involved. That's correct.
Well, I noticed in their quote for the fees, Waleska's not mentioned.
So what has been discussed there is that the three big cities will take on the lead in any fees that are associated outside of the retainer, basically because, you know, it's, it's going to be very miniscule for Waleska.
Mr. Grant?
Just a couple of questions. Has, have any of the other cities voted on this yet?
Yes, I believe Holly Springs and Woodstock were both unanimously approved. Waleska's was not unanimous, but theirs was also approved.
Okay. And then the hourly rate beyond the retainer, are those hourly rates split by all the cities? Are they, are they?
They're split, split by Canton, Woodstock, and Holly Springs.
Okay.
And what we did there, just so you know, is we took the population, the population of 2010, and took the average of a hundred percent and broke it up among those three cities, so roughly, you know, roughly eighty percent of it is between Canton and Woodstock, and then Holly Springs, I think, has a little, around twenty percent, so we tried to do it the fairest way we could come up with.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Estes made the motion to approve. Ms. Wilson seconded that motion. Any other discussion, questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay. City Attorney, you're going to handle the quitclaim deed for the reservoir?
Yes, sir. The city had recently concluded four related cases that connected to past condemnations for the reservoir, and as part of the final agreement and consent order, in those cases, the city agreed to quitclaim, not that the city claims any interest any longer to these properties, but the property owners. Attorney wanted that to be clear in the deed record, so we need to authorize the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds back to the property owners in those cases, and those property owners are Fincher Road Investments, LLLP, Michelle Frohner-Barger, Tony Watkins, and Moore Reunion Association. So just looking for an action to conclude those cases by agreement by authorizing the mayor to sign quitclaim deeds.
Doesn't this end all the cases?
That's my understanding.
I think Kathy will find that interesting, as much as she worked on, on some of these things, this is the end of it, we believe, anyway.
Yay.
And that reservoir was started a long time ago, as you know, but thank goodness it's, we're getting through it now, so do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Goodman, Goodman made the motion, Mr. Grant seconded the motion. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. All right. I think you're up.
The only thing I wanted to note to you tonight, we have received the initial draft digest from the tax assessor. I believe we had about six-hundred thousand in increased property valuations. Of that, about half is new digest, new things coming online, the other half is increases in existing property values, and of course, that's before any, any appeals or what have you at the process. So staff right now is working on putting together our budget for 2020. Hopefully, we'll see clearly in 2020, right? But we're working on putting that together. Just so you're aware, because we do have the agreement with the tax commissioner to collect our tax bills on our behalf, we do have to have the millage rate approved by the end of July. Our budget does not have to be approved until the first, until at the very last, the first meeting in September, and so we're going to be bringing to you all the information we can in June, but it may require, depending on what we want to do with the millage rate, that we have a first reading of the millage rate in June, and then two readings in July, if there's no rollback, or if there's an increase or what have you. Worst-case scenario is we can have a hearing in June, thinking what we may do with the millage rate, and you can always decide to change it in July, and it doesn't really matter at that point, but we're going to lay out that timeline for you so that you're aware of where those meetings are going to be scheduled.
Did you say that it was a digest preliminarily is up six-hundred thousand?
That's correct.
And that is the net, is that before or after exemptions that we have?
After exemptions.
After. Okay, so that.
About half of that is new growth, and the other half is increases in existing property values.
Okay.
And of course, you know, like I said, we've just gotten that, so we're also having to look and make sure that it's properly coded and things like that, so there could still be changes in that, so.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good news, I think. I mean, how does that, how did that, would that compare to last year? Do you know, Nathan?
Last year was about two, two or three.
Well, or, six-hundred thousand this year so far, what would it have been last year? Okay, so it's about.
It was like, yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's almost doubled. The increase has almost doubled.
And we saw a little bit of a decrease during the appeals process, but not a, but not a substantial amount of that, so to speak.
Well, I understand, I haven't seen the mail yet, but I understand some folks are getting their assessments already from the.
Get it today? I got none today.
I probably got one then.
Mine was.
And, and, was everyone's up?
Mine was up.
And, and just so you'll know, what we do when we get that final digest, we load that into our mapping system, and so there's a layer on our GIS that basically tracks last year's digest versus this year's digest, and if, if the property is coded pink or red, it means that it went down in value. If it's coded light green or dark green, it went up in value, and those that are kind of a, I'll say, gray color had no significant change, and so that's one way that we try to look at it, so we can have conversations, again, with the assessor's office on, okay, why, why did this section of town really increase versus this section, you know, because we want to understand their process as well, so.
Mr. Grant?
Mr. Peppers, can you put in plain terms what the six-hundred thousand increase in tax digest, bottom line, does for the city? Just for those that may be watching online and.
Correct.
Just, just so we're all clear on that.
So for us, one meal of taxes is roughly a million dollars. In the case of an increase in the digest, only a portion of that, that new portion, is really affected in the rollback rate for council, so don't think that just because you have six-hundred thousand means that you could roll the taxes back, you know, point six meals to adjust for that, because some of that is not always, you know, some of that is new development that we still have to provide service for. So our total general fund budget is generally, I think this year, our, our initial draft budget's about sixteen and a half million dollars, and, you know, the police department's about five million dollars of that, a little more. But our general fund budget, our general fund budgeting, it's also the largest department that we have, but our general fund budget also includes not only property tax, which is about five and a half, six million dollars, but it also includes business license fees, permit fees, there's a lot of things that go into that that help make up those funds.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that an increase in the tax digest is actually positive for the city.
Correct, and, and you know, one of the quirks of state law is that, you know, if you don't change your millage rate at all, and your digest went up, you have to notify the public that you're increasing their taxes. All we're really doing is adopting the millage rate. The taxes are actually appraised, and so, you know, we're not affecting the taxes from that standpoint, we're just adopting the millage rate. The state lets us be responsible to tell the voters what that millage rate would be if we took advantage of all of that increase in property valuations and rolled it back, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Yon?
I had one thing I wanted to mention. Steve Green's father passed away earlier this week. The service is Saturday at Ingram's in Coming, so I just wanted to mention to anybody that was not aware, and keep the family in your prayers as they go through this time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion, that's all we have, I think.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Are we going to do council-introduced items? If you want to. I want to ask, I want to ask a question. I'm not taking, I'm not taking a long time this time. I just want to ask Mr. Peppers, if he was looking for a date for us to look over the ethics ordinance, you know, we were going to sit down for a work session, and I started looking through that, and I'd like to sit down with y'all.
Sure. So, so we can do it that way. One of the things Ms. Waters is working on, there is a six-hour ethics training class that Carl Vincent Institute does, and so we're looking to see how quickly we could schedule something like that.
Okay.
So, you know, if y'all want to, if y'all want to sit tight for maybe a couple of weeks and we can see if we can come up with a date. So maybe we can get something and set it all up at the same time, if that's.
They, they would be coming here.
Yes, they would be coming here. That's correct.
Sounds good. Thanks. I told you it wouldn't take long, ma'am.
Ultimately, it would be our decision if we just want to make that in-house training for us, or if we want to open.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Your day for others to come, we could do that as well, so.
Anyone else? Did we get a motion in a second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn or?
Second.
Mr. Yon made the motion, Mr. Grant seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.